So we're gonna call the meeting to order. And our first order of business is pledge allegiance. I don't know whose turn it is. Councilman Bailey?
You lead us in the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bailey. And for roll call, we have all present here this evening except our mayor, who is enjoying Mizuwa, Japan. So, first item on the agenda tonight is our consent items. And that includes a couple of resolutions.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda this evening. This includes the meeting agenda for this evening, vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. It includes Resolution 2017-44 revising the regular meeting schedule for November and December 2017 for the City Council, and Resolution 2017-45 declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee and authorizing the Department of Public Works to dispose of the personal property identified in that resolution.
Second? I have a motion by Councilmember Koulas and a second by Councilmember Bailey to adopt tonight's agenda, the vouchers and minutes, and Resolution 2017-44 and Resolution 2017-45. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So, this is the time when we ask for any citizens' comments or requests. We'll give you three minutes. All we ask is you come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any takers? Seeing none. Presentations. But before we get to presentation, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have the mayor of Shalan with us tonight. Mayor Cooney, welcome. Glad to see you here.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
I just came down to spend money, and watch out.
Well, you're always welcome to do that.
I'm always willing to come down and see you guys.
Well, thank you for being here. Okay, with that, presentations. We've got AWC RMSA Retro Safety Academy graduates. Maria Holman.
Good evening. We don't have any employees here today, so I'll just go through the presentation and read the names if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, today, we would like to acknowledge that the following employees completed the Retro Safety Academy training. So they completed 12 class, 12 training classes or courses that covered workplace safety and compliance. And by completing the courses, they received this award. And it's the Retro Safety Coordinator Award or Achievement. This helps us in our work. It brings safety into the workplace, and it also encourages employees to think about safety and help each other or remind each other about safety. And so I hope that the city will continue to provide this training for our employees in the future. So today, we would like to acknowledge Kami Cabo, Carrie Page, Ruda Jones, Tim McCord, Kevin Patrick, Jenny Brason, Adam Reichert, Liz Rivera, and Devlin Waltz. And in addition to this training, bringing safety to city and city employees and allowing them to return home safely. It also benefits the city. It provides a discount to our retro service fee with AWC. And so last year, we saved approximately $3,500. So that's also a big plus.
So it's a benefit to all of us.
It's a benefit to all of us.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, wonderful. And on behalf of the city, we want to say thank you to all those who participated. I'm sorry they couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, me too.
And Jim, I understand you were part of that as well?
Well, I wasn't. I am a member of the Board of RMSA Risk Management Services Association, which is another one of the pools that AWC provides. There's all these different pieces of the Well Cities program, which we are a part of and have received for, I don't remember how many years now, seven or eight, it seems, thanks to Tammy and her staff and crew. And Retro, which is working this comp side of things. And then, of course, RMSA, which provides our liability and property damage and those kinds of things. These kinds of trainings in all the various pools, it's all kind of interrelated because it's all about reducing risk. And so we have, I think we have done quite well as a city, both with Well City and with Retro, to get these rebates, as you will. And so it's good to see our staff taking advantage of those things.
Yeah.
And as a member of the Board of RMSA, I would like to specifically thank them for taking the time to do that and to make our city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maria, while I've got you, we wanted to acknowledge that, I understand, that tomorrow is your last day at the city after 16 years. Maria is taking a new position as the city clerk for the city of East Wenatchee.
Yes.
So thank you very much for your 16 years.
I appreciate it.
And I understand that tomorrow morning, here at City Hall at 7:30 a.m., there will be a breakfast, Your Honor. And everybody is welcome to attend that. So congratulations on your new position.
I'm gonna miss that, Steve.
You'll have to fix your own breakfast, Steve.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our action items. We have our LTGO Bond Ordinance. Steve King and Brad presenting.
And Roy.
And Mr. Cogan. I think we were gonna have Steve kinda kick it off a little bit, and then Mr. Cogan can tell us all the other things that most of us don't understand.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve King, Economic Development Director for the city. We're here tonight to look at securing financing for the workout in our North Wenatchee master plan area. So, as you recall, in 2015, the fires came through and destroyed quite a bit of that area. We also had a project on the books, the McKittrick Street Signal. And when we master planned that area, there was a, the results of the master plan identified that we needed a new signature street that headed east across the railroad tracks, which would be McKittrick Street at the time and at the signal that's planned. In looking at that and working with the property owners, it was recognized that the property owners are going to vacate the area. Northwest Wholesale predominantly, DOT is in the process of vacating the area. And this would be a great opportunity to install public infrastructure, namely roads, in that area while these properties were in transition. So these funds will be used to purchase those right of ways. And a lot of the right of way, a lot of it will be entire property takes. We'll be buying the entire property and keeping the right of way and selling off remnants. And this financing will help us, this short-term financing will help us do that work.
Yeah, so I think Steve pretty much covered most of the reason for it. And so we need to-
What he said, right?
What he, what Steve said. So, yeah, basically trying to cash flow. So we're getting a line of credit for up to $5 million to try to cash flow it. We, talking to Steve, it doesn't sound like we'll probably have much more than $3 million outstanding at any one time. And so we're hoping to be able to, Steve's assured me that we'll be able to pay these off with either future grant revenues that will help fund the right-of-way purchases or sales of the properties. We'll go back to pay off this line of credit. And we should, the plan is that it'll all be paid off within five years. And so I guess Roy Cogan from Cutac Rock has prepared the bond ordinance, and he has reviewed the bond purchase contract. And he can get into more of the technical stuff if you want.
So can you tell us a little bit about how this differs from a normal bond, since it's a line of credit rather than taking that money out initially?
Certainly. You know, we have before you ordinance number 2017-19. And what it does is authorizes a 10-year limited tax general obligation bond. As Brad indicated, we don't expect it to be outstanding for that period of time. For the first five years, it's a revolving line of credit. So you can draw down on the $5 million and repay it at any time without a penalty. And that's the difference between a normal bond issue that would have fixed maturity, a fixed maturity schedule for 10 years. So this is, you draw it down, pay it back. And the reason it's 10 years is if we get to the end of five years and there's anything outstanding, you have the option of terming it out and making equal on your payments of principal and interest for the balance for the next five years. So it's not expected to be used, but it's a safety net for the city. It's a variable rate obligation. And it's a taxable obligation because you're buying and selling property. And under the federal income tax laws for tax bonds, that's considered to be a change in use. So it would be taxable. Interest rate today would be roughly 3.5%. It varies. It's the three-month LIBOR plus 2.2%. The term out rate at the end of five years, if anything's outstanding, is the five-year swap rate at that time plus 2.2%. And again, the extra five years is just a safety net. From talking to Steve and Brad, it's not anticipated that's gonna be needed. We didn't have to pay anything extra for it. So it really is managing cash flow in the projects.
Roy, on that last five years, is there any penalty to pay that if we got?
There is not.
No? Okay, I know the first five you said, but I wasn't sure.
No, there's not. And the bank was selected under a competitive process. We received proposals and went with Mr. Tinker and his bank.
And I think everybody saw that there was a letter from him thanking us for basically considering them and thought that was very professional of him and everything looked like it was well in order. I know Mr. Cogan's secretary, Debbie, went over the process with us, with Brad and I, earlier this afternoon. Thank you for your time. You explained that very well, and we appreciate that. Did anybody else have any questions for staff or Mr. Cogan?
So we're scheduled to close the transaction on September 6th. At that time, we will not borrow any money. And it's anticipated the first draw may be a month or two after that. So we'll, I know the city will delay as long as it can so it doesn't accumulate interest on money until they actually need to spend it. And the drawdown procedure is very quick. You know, it's just a couple of days. So we can time it with some precision.
Sounds excellent.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I'd make a motion- I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2017-19 establishing a line of credit not to exceed $5 million and authorizing the mayor pro temp to execute the bond purchase contract with North Cascades Bank.
Got a tie here. So we'll say that I have a motion from Councilmember Koulas and a second by Councilmember Markart to adopt ordinance number 2017-19 establishing a line of credit not to exceed $5 million. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
And thank you for your time earlier today.
All right. Supplement number three to agreement with HDR, Gary Owen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gary Owen, city engineer. What I got here tonight is a supplement to our design agreement with HDR Engineering for the McKittrick Street project. It's right-of-way again. This is on the other side of Wenatchee Avenue, basically from Wenatchee Avenue up to Pine Street. And we've run into some difficulties acquiring right-of-way. And we may wind up needing to condemn a property or two before it's all done. And in going through that, obviously, we incur additional costs with our consultant negotiator, design folks and that to try to, in negotiations, to try to reach a resolution. And that's the purpose for needing to add some more funds to our agreement with HDR, who is also performing the right-of-way services for us. Doesn't mean that we need to do any updating of the overall project budget at this point in time.
Kind of within our contingency funds?
Yeah, still within the, we're still within our project budget. That may change. But also, we have the ability to recover some additional TIB funds as the project goes along. When costs overrun, we've got another administrative increase that we can get out of the TIB. So we think we'll be okay at this point.
And do we feel like we can reach an agreement?
One way or another, we'll reach an agreement. Our schedule at this time basically is to have the right-of-way in hand by the end of the year so that we can advertise the project and start first thing in the spring. We may be, if we have to go through condemnation, we may still be doing some of those sorts of things after the fact and taking care of, taking care of the paperwork after the fact. But we'll have the property in hand and be going forward with the project next year.
How far along are we now? I'm just like-
It's completely, completely designed and ready to go to bed.
Okay.
This is the last step-
This is just the last few, couple of properties.
This is the last two parcels that, yeah. Started with attorneys, and we're still dealing with attorneys. We don't get to deal with the actual property owners. Nothing against attorneys.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign a supplement agreement, number three, with HDR Engineering Incorporated for the McKittrick Street rebuild project, city project number 1501.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Poyer and a second by Councilmember Asparza to adopt supplement number three to the agreement with HDR Engineering. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Shalan County. Matt Leonard and Mitch.
Good evening, just Mitch tonight. Good evening, council members. This is simply an interlocal agreement for materials, labor, and equipment should we choose to utilize it with Shalan County. These are typically done during emergency situations or if we happen to have a piece of equipment that's broken down. Initiated this with the Utility Division based on some of our specialty equipment, particularly Vector trucks, of which Shalan County actually has the same model. So the county actually has this agreement with Douglas, Kittitas, Whitman Counties, the DOT, and the city of East Wenatchee. So it's at their predetermined rates, as would it be with ours, going back toward them with a 10% administrative fee. So, pretty straightforward.
Mitch, is there, is there an actual published schedule of costs for each piece of equipment, or is this?
They don't necessarily publish it outside of their budget, but they do have one that's established every year, as we do. So before we would actually enter into using a piece of their equipment, we would have their rates.
Okay. So this is, this is something that we have seen or like-
Yeah, we have.
I mean, I guess it sounds a little bit kind of sight unseen here, I guess, the way I've kind of read this, so.
Right, well, we have the, you know, this is purely optional. So generally, we wouldn't normally use the other agency's equipment unless we were in a situation where we had some pretty specific needs. Again, typically, that's in emergency situations if other equipment isn't available or if we end up doing joint response for flooding, those type of things, and get some assistance or lend some assistance.
Sound like a good win-win.
Yep.
We know if they have a boat now? Does Shalan County have a boat?
Like a ski boat?
Sheriff does.
I know. The sheriff's department, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have several.
I thought we only used the ones in Douglas County.
They have boats up on Lake Shalan. I think they have a couple of them.
Yeah, they're on the river.
But on the river.
Oh, I don't know about on the river.
Do we, do we have similar agreements with any other agencies like this? Like with East Wenatchee or?
PUD.
PUD?
So we do use the PUD's agreement. We use it for picking up snow in the winter. We rent their trucks from them.
Any other questions for Mitch? Or now Matt?
Well, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the City Council approve the interlocal agreement with Shalan County of labor, equipment, and materials and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey and a second by Councilmember Markart to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Shalan County. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Federal Building Architectural Services, Steve King.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to Councilman Koulas and Poyer for helping out in the selection process. We had a team of staff that reviewed five different architectural firms. They came in and interviewed with us. Dmitri and John Sebeck and Greg Mercer, Brenda Mendelis from Local Tel also sat in on those interviews. And it came right down to, we unanimously picked ARC Architects. They have a ton of experience. They were dynamic. They, we thought they'd work well with our staff and consider what the public's interests were. They just have done a lot of city halls and seen a lot of different ways to deal with city halls. Even though most city halls perform the same function, there's different ways to approach it. And I checked their references. Talked to three or four of their references this week, and they were all just glowing. So we're recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign contracts with ARC Architects to provide services associated with schematic design and building system evaluations.
We were fortunate in having the group that we did to, the different ones to interview. And as Mr. King said, that really came down to an experience with city halls in particular, and repurposing and retrofitting buildings for that purpose. And we, one of the strengths that we thought was because they have such experience with cities that they understand how those core functions operate, and it will save us, in the end, will save us time not educating them on what we do. They, they'll know what we do. And they've seen other operations and can help us maybe transition the way we do things. So I would make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign contracts with ARC Architects for architectural services associated with evaluation and repurposing of the federal building for a new city hall.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Koulas and a second by Councilmember Poyer to adopt the agreement with, I lost my place, ARC Architects for architectural services. And I think the only comment I had is, we had a meeting earlier today with Mr. Sebeck, and his concern was is that we definitely work together to give the architects some guidance so that we can start this agreement off right and make sure that what we're getting proposed is going to be agreeable to both entities. Fair statement?
Hmm.
Any other questions or comments for Steve?
Yeah, Steve, I guess two, two things. They, you hit, there were five, you looked at five firms. Okay, was there, was there any, anybody local that took a shot at it, or?
There was, there was two firms that were local, yeah.
Okay. And they're, and the firm selected, now they're from Seattle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
The thing I'm a little fuzzy on is on the, you know, it says in our packet here, up to $150,000. That, anytime I see that, up to, that kind of raises a, it's like if you say, "How long does it take to do something?" And it says, "An hour, it takes an hour." So is, at this point, was it just looking at qualifications? Was this an RFQ, and then they will submit bids? Or is there, or did each of them submit a price tag that goes along with this?
So with architectural and engineering services, we can't select based on price. So we set the budget, and then what we'll do is negotiate a scope of work. And the budget authorized by the finance committee was $150,000. So I would imagine it'll be pretty close to $150,000. But that, yeah, we'll negotiate the scope of work and to not exceed $150,000.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That makes sense. Any other questions or comments? So, already said who made the motion. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Project 1518, final acceptance. Matt Leonard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is for project 1518, which was a project that updated the regional water system and our domestic water system, SCADA network, which is the communication network, which sends data back and forth from all of our telemetry units, which are units that just collect data based, you know, pressures, how much a meter flows, as well as at regional, when to turn the pumps on and things like that. So it was, it was a part of the regional upgrade project that we did where we did the motor controls and soft starts. This was a separate contractor that, but all kind of lumped into the same project. So this, this contract came in. We had a change order that added another unit during the project. There was a unit at the intersection of Monitor and Mar Street that got hit by a car. So we had to be, change ordered that in to replace that unit. And that, that wasn't paid for by the insurance fund, I believe. And so this, yeah, it, this project also, a big part of this project was RH2 engineers did the integration for the controls. And that project came in, I think, about $18,000 under budget. So overall, the project came in under the budget. And this, it's been finished for a while. It's just, just kind of just cleaning it up and getting it accepted so we can get their retainer released.
What's, are there things that were hanging out there that were, this is just coming to us now? I know this project's been going on for like three or four years.
Yeah, so the Taurus Group, they installed all the equipment. And then RH2 got it all working. It's been done since, I think, November. It's just, I forgot to take it, to get it accepted. And then they called asking where their retainer was. So that's why I'm here.
They wanted their money.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Related to, you know, I mean, related to it, but not directly on the, on the acceptance thing, but is, is all of our new motors and all this kind of stuff, is everything working?
Yeah, it's working really well. It's, yeah, it turned out to be a good project. There really wasn't any, any issues with it.
Lights don't dim in East Wenatchee anywhere?
No, the PUD's really happy. They don't have any voltage drops in their system.
Okay.
Yeah, they're happy.
No comment.
Your Honor, I move to accept the work performed by Contractor Towers Power and Controls for the domestic water SCADA system upgrade, project 1518, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Harold and a second by Councilmember Bailey to accept the work performed by Towers Power and Controls for project 1518. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Annex, annexation 10% petition. Are you receiving that?
Good evening, council. I'm Matt Parsons, Associate Planner.
And Brooklyn Holton Housing Community Planner.
And walking much better.
Yeah, no boo is my one-week anniversary of no boo.
The Sheeney Annexation, which a few weeks ago was before you. We had a, the petition was created and signed and went to the assessor's office, and it came back as you'll, you see on the paper that I passed out to everyone, it came out as 59%. on the paper that I passed out to everyone, it came out as 59%. Didn't get to me prior to sending out the agenda packet, so I am providing it to you now so you can see it. So, we've now changed the boundary to be just the applicant's parcel, which should certainly pass. And so, we just need to set the boundary again. The council needs to set the boundary before we then create a new petition to send to the assessor's office. So, that's, that's what's before you tonight.
Your honor, I make a motion that the city council approve the annexation boundary, including the applicant's parcel and the adjacent right of way with the 10% annexation petition for property located in an unincorporated area northeast of Stella Avenue and Walnut Street to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as it is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city as North Wenatchee Business District and to, is that true? North Wenatchee Business District?
Yes, that's correct.
And to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed.
Second.
I have a motion by council member Koulas and a second by council member Harold to accept the boundary readjustment for the 10% annexation petition for the property in the unincorporated area northeast, northeast of Stella Avenue and Walnut Street. Any other comments or questions for staff?
I think the only question I have is, were any of the property owners impacted by the change of this boundary? Other than the ones that were involved in first place?
Well, Matt...
So, there was only two.
Yeah.
There was one large property that's requesting it and then we tried to bring in one, only one other property.
Okay.
And that owner did not, we didn't get a signature from them to make it at least 60% so that we could go forward with the annexation. And so, we're now removing that one property and so it's only the original application.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, it affected the other property owner here by making him happy because he didn't want to be annexed.
Right.
Sewer service.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's still there, he can hook up when he needs to. Just won't be as easy for him. So, with that, we have a second and a, or a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Agreement for pedestrian access with the Drago property.
Tammy, could I click, or Jesse, click to the screen here? Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Glenn DeVries, community development director. Have before you this evening a proposed agreement for pedestrian access between the city of Wenatchee and Braden Drago. If you recall, in the Riverwalk area, in the last few years, you've seen a number of things happen. There's been a plat alteration, a binding site plan alteration, there's been a vacation. We had a pedestrian access agreement where the property owners dedicated a pedestrian access to us, all for the purposes of helping to facilitate development in this area. Since that time, Mr. Drago has, Mr. Braden Drago has purchased a number of these properties and is proposing to do some development, which is excellent. The whole purpose of the prior actions, trying to facilitate some positive development here on some property that's stayed vacant for quite a while. Mr. Drago approached the city about wanting to relocate the pedestrian access. And if you see the map here, just the quick image I put together, the pink center portion, which is labeled B, which is not to scale, which is six feet wide, that's our pedestrian tract. He's requesting that we relocate that access and that it be relocated to parcel C, which is to the south. What you don't see in that parcel, because this isn't a current picture, is there's now a nice new private road in that facility on the southern edge. And what Mr. Drago proposes is that the pedestrian access follow that road and that he would grant us a access and utility easement for that pedestrian access following that road. But then also, we would get a, purchase a access, pedestrian access heading north, which would reconnect with access that in the future, the parlets have agreed to grant at the time development goes into place on their parcels. Why the purchase of that easement? The city had set aside funds to put in that access facility to construct it. We have to pay prevailing wages, so it is actually a benefit to the city by purchasing that north-south easement. And then, the property owner, when they do their development, can put that in place. So, there are three proposed actions with, with this agreement before you. One would take the area in pink there, B, that pedestrian access land, and there's actually a two-foot construction easement adjacent to it to the south. So, that eight-foot area, it would relinquish that, giving it back to the current property owner, Mr. Drago, in parcel C. It would ask him to consolidate that pedestrian tract and make it part of parcel C, because we don't want a small little sliver of land hanging out there as a parcel. And then, it would, the second action would be that Mr. Drago would give us a six-foot access and utility easement adjacent to the private road. The third action is that Mr. Drago would give us a, we would purchase a six-foot access easement running north-south, connecting up with the future area that the parlets have committed to or the future property owners of the parlet parcels have committed to, ultimately extending to the PUD park. Why is Mr. Drago interested in this? He's looking at developing parcel A and parcel C. Having that intersecting, dividing ownership makes it more problematic, problematic to develop it. He has a development proposal, which is currently out for environmental review, which is shown here. And he intend, he's indicated and he's shown some draft proposals, it's nothing solidified yet, that he wants to do a future second phase in the area identified as parcel A and additional parking and the remainder of parcel C. And that depending on what the structure is located, certainly with parking, be able to go over and have one campus, one park versus having something separated. He's, he desires to have that as one overall park and not having a dividing ownership property boundary. So, he requested this change and that's why the proposal is before you today. The agreements would provide that the pedestrian access along the road would be constructed, essentially concurrently with the commercial building permit in the future for parcel C, that proposal that I had up just a minute ago. The remainder of the north-south connection, connecting portion would be built at the time of his next phase of development. Because he's not proposing to build out all of parcel C at this time and likely that would occur with doing construction on parcel A. So, either way, if he completes the construction of parking on parcel C or if he does anything on parcel A, that would trigger the north-south connection for the remainder of the pedestrian access on his properties. And then, the remainder to get to the PUD park would occur at the time, which is currently set up, would occur at the time that the parlet parcels are developed by them or some other owner to the east. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Did you say there's already a road?
There is. I'm sorry it doesn't show up on this, this, this is the most recent photo I can get. There is a road set up by the binding site plan for Riverwalk and that is on the southern edge of parcel C. And it runs through that parcel and it, ultimately, there will be a circulation system that connects up to the northern road you see. Whether that will be just for fire apparatus vehicles or whether there'd be more access would have to be discussed, but it would be connected and it would also provide for full circulation for city utilities, which we have easements for.
When I was looking, Glenn, when I was looking at this earlier, this has been brought up a couple of times, but it seems like, because that road's there, I was actually went by, it seems like it's going to have more access for more people to use it. That's why, I know it's not instant, but it's going to be, when it's all completed, we're going to have a nice, a nice site. And I like the idea of not splitting parking here or doing something over here. But that's the way I, that's the way I saw it. It's going to be good for our future. And I think more people will use it right away, is what I'm thinking.
And the nice thing about relocating the access to the south, it leaves the door, the way the agreement's written, it leaves the door open for the development to the east by, on the parlet parcel, when that develops, to potentially relocate that to where it could just go be a straight connection running along the road, straight to the river, or do something else depending on what the development, which type of development form happens on the parlet piece. So, it provides that flexibility.
Right. And, and the roads they've put in now don't have sidewalks on them, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's why this would be, need to be its own separate sidewalk.
And Mr. Drago is here this evening, should you have any questions for him?
I think you've explained it very well. Any other questions? Glenn? Well, with that, I would entertain a motion then.
Your honor, I move for city council to authorize the mayor to sign the pedestrian access agreement.
Second.
So, I have a motion by council member Harold and a second by council member Markart to sign the agreement, for the mayor to sign the agreement for the pedestrian access on the Drago property. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That is all of our action items for tonight. The mayor's report is none because he's enjoying miswa Japan. From the pictures, it looks like he's having a good time. Any reports from any of your council committees?
Tammy, do you want to get that report on the...
Oh, well, yeah, our wellness committee is, which Lyle is on, we're going to do a bowling tournament. So, we wanted to ask the council members and the mayor to be team captain. So, it's Sunday, September 24th at 1:00 at East Montlains and it's $9 per person and families are welcome. So, be fun for...
It's on a Sunday?
Yep.
Yes, Sunday at 1:00 on the 24th. And that's because, and that keeps out of their really big public bowling time, which comes later in the day. And I'm, we're hoping to get eight teams. We need a minimum of six teams. And there'll be $9 per person for a line each.
Sounds like a great event.
Can my husband participate?
Yes.
Oh, everybody, yeah.
He's pretty good. I'm pretty bad.
Kids, spouses. We would like as many council members as possible to be captains of teams.
Do you have to go recruit your eight or nine people or whatever?
Well, we are, people are signing up, so we'll get a pick out of the, of the pool.
Everybody, you just need to respond to me that you're going to participate and I'll put you on the list and, oh, it'll be fun.
When do we tie dye t-shirts and...
You can.
Be careful about betting for money. We had a bowling party a few years ago for Christmas and some of our staff showed up with their own bowling shirts. Yeah, there's some serious bowlers out there that you may not know.
There's some sandbaggers out there.
Now you know where to recruit.
Right. They come with their own bag and ball and...
The Steve's office.
Also, shoes are included in the $9.
In the $9, okay. Sounds like a great event.
I'll tentatively volunteer, but I got to make sure I'm going to be here first.
So, signups are with Tammy?
Tammy?
Yep.
I replied, didn't I, Tammy?
Just simply let me know if you can come or not and if you're going to bring people.
Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, so I can't. Otherwise, it sounds like fun.
Maybe you should be committed.
All right. If there's nothing else, I think we are adjourned.